All right, it is now four thirty PM. We will call to order the Board of Supervisors' Work Session Two, the August twenty first, two thousand and eighteen, four thirty PM, Main Conference Room, County Administration Building, One Center Street, Chatham, Virginia, two four five three one. Roka?
Mr. Barber. Mr. Blackstock.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, under closed session, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, whose legal authority would indicate two point two, as three seven one one eight five, subject Project twelve hundred, purpose update or prospective economic development project in discussion of project parameters.
Hang on a second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion passed, we're down to item five, presentation, the first presentation was for the School Board Resolution Information, and staff contact is Mr. Sides, and I think we have, I think, oh, that's right, we amended, we got approved, sorry. Got a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Get your second. All right, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all, please vote. All votes have been cast, please record the votes. Agenda's approved, we're down to item five, presentation, staff contact for the resolution for the School Board information, and Greg Sides, and I think we have a presenter for Dr. Mark Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just quickly to Dr. Jones, but the county administration was approached by Dr. Jones about an option to improve school funding and construction and funding and such in Pennsylvania County, and Dr. Jones suggested that if he could come to our work session, that'd be a good opportunity to explain it to the board, and should have the actual resolution on your work business meeting. Uh, Dr. Jones?
This is Warren, School members of the Board of Supervisors. I bring to you this evening a proposed resolution. I would really like to give your direction, I guess approval, to speak to our legislators about the possibility of requesting a resolution from the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, requesting similar to what was done in Northern Virginia, a sales tax by referendum, where the additional funds could be directed to school construction debt service projects. It'd be only for that, it'd only be for that construction project where the referendum was directed, and once that money is paid back, then that, the sales tax would revert back to the original amount of five point three percent. I think Northern Virginia looks at six point four percent versus five point three percent sales tax, with the additional funding going to pay for road construction. I'd like to speak with our legislators about the possibility of looking at money directed towards capital projects for schools.
I only have a question, a comment. Will we vote for a resolution? My basically what we're doing is voting on as an endorsement for legislature to enact legislation that puts us on the books.
Yes, sir.
But any tax that was put on the citizens of this county would have to go before the board referendum.
Yes, sir, exactly. It's not a regular tax, it's a proven ability for local tax, so by referendum, that.
My only comment to that is that the citizens of this Commonwealth were sold their goods when we enacted and passed the lottery, that those funds would all be passed on to the localities in the form of school funding. But basically, what the state legislature did was a shell game, and took money out of one pot and put it in another, and it didn't help anybody go on.
Yes, sir. And what I'm really asking for tonight is that if you all would say for me that I'm located, speaking to legislators, to bring this resolution back to you all in September, once I get legislators saying, if that's what you wish to do, that they would at least look at this during the General Assembly by January.
Any other questions? You want a motion to adopt that?
It's on our consent agenda for action tonight. So your choice is either get consent here and bring it back in September, or if everybody's okay with it, just proceed tonight to adopt this resolution, knowing that any potential tax increase would be subject to a referendum of the voters.
We giving it up to them to decide.
I was gonna say admire the idea, but the board tried this a while back, and we didn't get far, and hopefully time just goes in and we get rolling, and we did, and we got that very quick. And it is a good idea, we were trying to draw resources to fund things in the county, but that's a good idea, that's fair way to do it. They look to you.
Mr. Schmuller. Concern of the question, cities actually have a little more latitude with taxation, lodges deals than county councils. We have to go through a lot more hoops and pedals to get revenue from our making decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we're down to six A, Regional Transit Project, Mr. Sides, I think you have a guess here for that.
Yes, sir, we do as well. This project has been before the board a couple of times in the past, we've talked to you about authorizing us to apply for a Tobacco Commission Grant in a regional transportation project that involves Pennsylvania County, Halifax County, and City of Danville. The grant is being spearheaded by Mark Allen, who's Director of Transportation for the City of Danville, and I asked Mr. Allen to come and attend our meeting today to update the board on things that have happened since that Tobacco Grant was approved. He certainly has been very busy, we've met with some groups that are interested stakeholders, so Mr. Allen, you can just update the board on kind of where we stand now, and what's the next step, part two?
All right, thank you very much, Chairman Warren, I'm a Warren member for the Board of Supervisors, I'm Mr. Schmuller. Appreciate this opportunity to update you on the status of our planning activities. Since the Tobacco Commission Grant was approved in January, a grant was also approved by the Virginia Department of Railroad and Public Transportation to pay for three buses that will be used in the service for both counties, Pennsylvania and Halifax County. Danville City Council did appropriate those funds, and the buses have been ordered. Over the last several months, I've been working with Greg and other folks involved in this project on the planning effort, and I thought it would be helpful to provide you all with a handout that helps to clarify some of the planning issues that we're trying to sort through. The first page of the handout identifies a schedule, a draft schedule, and identifies two different options, and I'd like to just sort of highlight some of the issues that are related in developing the schedule, and the need for public input to finalize a schedule that could be implemented. As identified in far left, the top half, this would be outbound service from Danville to Hurt, Virginia, again, this is draft, but the budget called for four bus runs, round trips to be completed, and in completing a number of test drives to determine how long it would take to operate a bus from the transfer center in Danville on Spring Street and serve various locations, we looked at possible bus stop locations such as Unique Industries, Woodwood Annual Area, Pennsylvania Career Technical Center, Ticequeez Plaza area, including Social Services, the town of Chatham, the town of Brettina, and the town of Hurt. In completing the test runs and factoring in the need to go off route, to serve different communities, to stop forward passengers, disembark passengers, and also meet with federal ADA requirements, go off route up to three quarters of a mile upon request from persons with disabilities, bottom line, we came up with the need for an hour and a half one-way trip, a three-hour round trip, leading to Danville at, for example, at five thirty, and returning to Danville by eight thirty, and departing around eight forty. And another big factor in planning out a schedule is the thought that it would be helpful if the service would coincide with Danville Transit's fixed route schedule. For example, buses depart from the transfer center at eight forty, eleven thirty, two forty, and so forth, so we're trying to connect, trying to interface this service with the fixed route service. With that being said, the options, one of the big options differences between option one and option two is the last departing time, for example, from Danville. Option one shows the possibility the last bus leading to Danville would be two forty PM, and arriving in Hurt four, and the service would terminate at five thirty, and the service would be provided Monday through Friday, of course, with everyone's approval. Now, option two, the big difference is that instead of running consecutively for a twelve-hour period, option one's five thirty AM and five thirty PM, option two, the big difference is that service would be suspended at eleven thirty, a break, and then it would be picked up at two forty PM and concluded at eight thirty. The big issue here is that the last departing time from Danville would be five forty-five PM, so if folks from the county secured employment, or had medical appointment, or educational opportunity, and they needed to stay in Danville beyond two forty, then it would be necessary to create that break, suspend service at eleven thirty, to offer a later departing time from Danville. So that's the basic differences between option one and option two. Does anybody have any questions about this draft schedule? And there's other options as well that could be designed, reconsidered, these aren't the only ones, could leave Danville at a later time, for example.
One thing I would emphasize for the board, and I already talked with Allen about this, is we're not expecting you to make a choice tonight, this is just to give you a sense of how really how involved the process is to try and coordinate these distant locations, and try to accommodate people doctor appointments, and work obligations too, so you're not looking for a vote tonight, you're just looking for, to make everybody aware of these are the kind of issues we have to wrestle with.
And one reason why we're suggesting the possibility of leaving Danville at five thirty, is Danville Transit receives regularly phone calls from people that are interested in working in the Unique Woodwood area, in order to arrive to complement their shift times, six o'clock in the morning, we need to depart around five thirty, so that's, if there was a, if you were wondering why we wanted to depart at that time, that's the reason. So that's just an overview of the draft service schedule. The rest of the handout covers the different bus stop locations and the different areas, and I'd just like to do a cursory summary for each one, so you can get a sense of what we're trying to accomplish and create flexibility for passengers to access the service, to serve as many different destinations as possible, and meet with this service schedule, and that's one of the big challenges. For example, I have one reflects a bus stop location that would serve Unique Industries, the service schedule would reflect the bus would definitely stop at a given location in this area, but passengers that would be interested in Danville Transit serving these other locations, such as Kangaroo Express, Bojangles Pressness Dialysis, then we would be able to serve those locations, deviate relative to an advanced request. Danville Transit provides reservation-based service, we're three hundred daily trips, Monday through Saturday from four AM to one AM, so what we're trying to do is create a hybrid, fixed route reservation-based arrangement to maximize flexibility and improve convenience for passengers, bottom line. So that's the first area. Second area is Pennsylvania Career Tech Center. Again, we establish a bus stop at Pennsylvania Career Tech Center with, and if someone was working at Atkins and Truck Sales, for example, or J&amp;J Truck Sales, or working at Chatham Middle School, then we would be able to serve those locations upon request. If someone boarded in Danville, for example, and got on the bus and said, I'd like to go to Atkins and Truck Sales, we would do that. Item three from the handout is the Ticequeez area. This is a real good example of having a lot of different possible destinations, but if you were to stop at every single location, you would add an excessive amount of ride time, inconvenience passengers, and just extend the budget, because the service budget is based on the time to complete the round trip. So in this case, a possible bus stop location at Social Services, and again, if people wanted to go to any one of these locations within a zone area, they would make an advanced request either by reservation by phone, or inform the driver that they'd like for the bus to be to serve those different stops. The Chatham area is a little different, plan to come off at fifty-seven, travel along Business Twenty-nine, and include a stop potentially at the Chatham Family Medical Center. I'm speaking with an apartment manager, a former apartment manager in Chatham, I was informed that a lot of Hurt residents were very interested in going to the Chatham Family Medical Center. The plan for this service area would be to deviate off the route up to a quarter of a mile to improve convenience. Again, people would call Danville Transit, and we would inform them that we could certainly come to their residents potentially, that it's within one quarter of a mile of this route path. So we want to do everything we possibly can to make this route accommodate individuals' needs. The Brettina area, based on a meeting at the Community Center on North Side Drive, originally the thought was to establish a stop on Watts Street at the Outreach Center in Brettina, and serve Brettina via fifteen forty, Bayonne Drive, but after a meeting at the Community Center, if we were informed, we would prefer that you would stop there in that area. So that's an example of getting public input out to potentially develop or alter the route path and potentially the service schedule. So again, in this area, like Chatham, we could come off route within a quarter of a mile, so that we could potentially serve a number of residences and different businesses along this path. And the final area would be the Hurt service area, same concept, the unique thing about serving Hurt would be that we would try to establish a stop at the Center of Virginia Family Physicians Center, so that we could establish connections with the Alte Vista Bus Service, which currently serves that facility. So we're trying to create as much flexibility as possible, and over the next few months, getting input so that we could better formalize the service plan, but you can see there's some flexibility here to go different ways. Mayor Poindexter was very interested, then Greg Imeek with Hurt Town Council to discuss the service concept, and we need to continue outreach efforts to get as much input as possible, so that we can put the best product out there. The buses should arrive potentially by late spring, we hope to be fully staffed to support, initiate the service this time next year, and we will be submitting a demonstration grant request to subsidize the service during year one. We're hopeful that since the state approved funding for the buses, that they will also approve funding for the operating assistance. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions from the board?
I just have one, I'm sure I already know the answer, but once the service gets started, you are still willing to be flexible if you see the need adjustments start.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. And I think it's, when we got, we said, Danville secured the demonstration grant over twenty years ago, one of the things that could be altered during this period, this three-year experiment using Tobacco Commission, is the parent, for example, the service schedule, the level of service, instead of offering four runs, maybe we find it's three runs that need to be provided to be efficient, more cost-effective, but definitely if we find that more people are calling, if they hear about the service, we can tweak the route path and change it, but probably have to be done on an annual basis.
There's a good question, just a comment, I certainly as a representative, when we heard of it, appreciate the coordination with the town of Alte Vista, that bus service, that bus encourage people to dialysis, to normalize, it's used, it makes round trips. To Alte Vista, the citizens of Hurt use the facilities in Alte Vista quite a bit, so I know it's a long ways away, but I know when we initially had these discussions, I was pretty concerned in stopping Brettina, and I appreciate the efforts, and I echo with Mr. Warren, said I'll send you, I'm assuming that I have to get up and going, probably do some surveys to see, look at your route as you have and see how to adjust your schedules to best serve those who utilize it.
Well, on those lines, Greg, did you want to mention the draft service that's currently being developed?
Yes, we will do that, and adjust as we go, but just to help us with these types of decisions in the initial plan, we're all working on a survey, Halifax County's doing the same thing, coming up with a survey that will determine if people need this mostly for medical purposes or for work purposes, kind of what's your primary interest, what routes are they interested in, the timing, so we have a draft version of that survey right now, but I think we're gonna finalize that a little bit based on some location information, and then we'll make that widely available through the newspaper, through our website, and get input about exactly what people's interests are, so we can match up with that.
I'm very excited personally about this, because I think it's going to serve a particular part of our population that really needs the service, it's going to get them access to a lot of services they haven't had access to, you know, it's just, it's a first step, though, I hope, I hope the vision is grander for a county that's almost a thousand square miles, we're just going up twenty-nine, so hopefully we'll be able to go other places in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, we're down to six B, Cherrystone and Roaring Fort Lake Dam, Mr. Dix.
Okay, Cherrystone Lake Dam has been approved by the Federal District Government, they plan on bringing it to you, now at your September meeting, once that's approved by the board, the next phase is to do the actual plans and specifications for the projects, which will be paid one hundred percent by the feds, and once those are done, the feds will start looking for funds for the actual construction of the project. Then you're seeing those costs for both dams, and their share would be sixty-five percent, our share is thirty-five percent, about four and a half million dollars of local share in all those two projects, but before they bring you the document, come in September, they're still asking for a final certification, which you have on your consent agenda this evening, and basically we're saying that we currently have the easements that cover to the top of the auxiliary spillway for the Cherrystone Dam project, and to an elevation of seven hundred point six feet, Roaring Fort Lake, which is just about a half foot above the top of the auxiliary spillway, and that you also certify that prior to construction, you will adopt an ordinance of some type that would restrict construction below those two elevations, and again, for Cherrystone, that's at six hundred eighty-two feet above sea level, and for the Roaring Fort Lake, it's seven hundred point six feet above sea level, so these projects are scheduled for, and as I said, the first, or the final plan for the Cherrystone Lake will be brought to you in the September meeting, and the second plan for the other lake is about four months behind that, so I suspect sometime back to the first year, you'll see that one also, and I suspect they were wanting to construction on both of them at the same time, I think you're probably looking at it sometime around two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Have asked for state assistance, at legislative break, so today we gave our legislature some, you know, additional information on the project, Chairman Warren was following up with some additional letters, and, you know, that I need to sign, so we hope we can get some help from them also, so. But your resolution is, is among the consent agenda, so if you got any questions on the project, I'll try and answer them. Questions, but there's still a little bit, so.
I don't have any questions on the project, I have questions on the four million dollars.
Well, you got two point six three five in the package, right?
Two million, six hundred and some thousand.
And you got two different projects, and I think one's like two point six, and the other one's just over a major, so it's.
I'd round it up the other. Yeah, you're rounding up the other.
You got Roaring Fort too, and I think our share had like one point something million.
Did we ever get anything on access? Do we have access to the lake, citizens?
I'm not aware of any right now, I mean, you basically got two easements, that's all you had of Lake Dam.
We could look into that. Most people is they can't get to the lake. You got to surround them for other projects.
We don't put as much of any taxpayer's money to get this straightened out, the public should have access to those, I think, so.
Yeah.
But your lakes, they're gonna land on the lakes all the way up to the lake, they're gonna all the way around the lake, so I guess you might get some kind of easement or some kind of, I'll make access to the lakes.
We might want to use them, of course.
And that's more of a.
We'll work on that, we'll. What you said was two homes that was going to be taken out, on the lower part of the dam, anyway, did we discuss, it was two sites that the county would probably end up with anyway?
Well, on the Cherrystone Lake, there's four houses above that level, and something would have to be done on those four houses, that had to be elevated or something, and that cost would be shared again on that sixty-five, thirty-five percent split, and I think your rest of all those four houses is like four hundred thousand or something dollars to have those elevated, and that's a, that's a change of those from the property. And if I were to move, that may be your access, that'd be, it's possible to be, you know, buy it and raise it up, so.
Other questions?
Mr. Dix, you're saying it's as quick as next month, it looks like?
Our final plan on the Cherrystone Lake should be before you next month, and if it's approved by this board, then they see funding for the design of the project, which will be one hundred percent federal, from the design, and then once you finish that, they'll look for funds for construction, which will probably be like twenty, twenty people at that point. And the state has funded several of these projects, so at some point they will take care of those options, if they have other counties.
Another question, Mr. Hicks.
I'd just say, Mr. Hicks and Mr. Hunt did engage our legislative orders last week during the, what's that day?
Legislative break.
Legislative break. I mean, we do plan to make this priority in Richmond this spring, when we get back together, and see if we can't get a advocate to make sure that when the time comes, we do get them to say a budget, so if there is not, we'll be, gold.
We're down to six C, year-end financial review, Ms. Vanderhaid.
I need to pass my presentation. I'm glad to speak with you this evening. I just wanted to give you a preliminary report. This is all pre-audit, so just know that these figures will change, but I wanted to give you some type of update. I have handed you out the copies of this, so you can read it a little bit better if it's on the little boogie on the screen, and I do have some extras that the public will like one at the end of the meetings. But of course, what we're all interested in is how did we do at year-end? And if you will look in FY twenty seventeen, our unadjusted year-end general fund balance totaled twenty-one point six million dollars compared to, at the end of FY twenty eighteen, it was twenty-two point three, and you're like, yay, that's wonderful, because it's seven hundred thousand dollars more than it was last year. Remember, last year we did take quite a dip, but you can't just look at it at the surface because we do have school carryover that factors into that. So in FY seventeen, the amount that was reverted back from schools was two point six million dollars. So I adjusted those figures by the amount of the carryovers, just to get us an apples-to-apple view. So in FY seventeen, you're now comparing eighteen, right at nineteen million dollars to our FY eighteen figure of eighteen point seven, and that's because our carryover increased by a million dollars from the schools, and that will be brought to you tonight for you all to approve that carryover, so it goes right, straight back to the schools. So at year-end, just so you know, and I think I've explained this to you before, the way our books are set up, the schools have to revert all of their money back to the general fund at year-end as well as social services. So the schools reverted three point six million dollars, and social services reverted just under a hundred and five thousand dollars. So our fund balance did decrease on a cash basis to just under three hundred thousand dollars. So just to see, you know, does that, is that really good or is it really bad? I thought it was quite an accomplishment, seeing as that we anticipated using three million dollars of our fund balance to balance our budget for eighteen, and our fund balance only dropped by three hundred thousand dollars, I think that's really good. But of course, several factors played into that. We did enact a vending freeze back in January, we also raised tax, so you know, that has your first payment in there for June. So if we had used that three million dollars, our fund balance as it stands right now would have been just shy of sixteen million instead of eighteen point seven. And our fund balance requirement is approximately fourteen point two million, so that means we need to keep at least fourteen point two million dollars on payment.
Ms. Vanderhaid?
Yeah.
How much of the, those funds were actually from the increase in taxes that were carried on towards the later, because of a party?
You're talking about if we.
Had not raised taxes.
Had we not raised taxes, we would have probably seen probably two million dollar decrease, I would say.
So it's two million, two million of that is.
I would say.
Okay.
I didn't do the math on that, but I can certainly give you that figure. It may not be quite that much because you're not looking at the entire tax increase, you're only looking at three cents on your real estate and a quarter on your personal property, because your landfill, which is three million dollars, none of that money has been seen, and won't be seen until December. So it may not have been quite that much, but I can certainly run those figures.
Yeah, I'd like to see those numbers because I would be surprised.
Excuse it, excuse it in your mind because that's actually, that money goes to the bottom of the year.
It does, and I did do the math as to what came in in June to say, because what we would like to do in the future is to have those monies assigned, so it comes out of your fund balance, so that we would have a true fund balance. But if we were to do that this year, you would have a negative fund balance, because so many of the tax that came in in June would take that eighteen million down below because we collected quite a bit. So that means we use some of our next year money.
Yes, sir. You said that the Department of Social Services sent money back, a hundred, how much was it?
It was just shy of a hundred and five thousand, I think at one oh four eight.
And they didn't, and that didn't.
They don't ask for that money.
They don't ask for it to come back, it was left.
Right.
Come back to the general fund.
Correct. And it just stays there. And I always throw this slide up that tells you what an unsigned fund balance is, it's just a residual classification that's not been budgeted in any other classification, it's basically money in your savings account. And the way our policy reads, financial policy reads, is we will keep twenty percent of our average actual general fund expenditures for the preceding three years, and that's our general fund expenditures per the audit. So that's why I say now it's roughly fourteen point two, because of course I don't have eighteen figures. So I think it will probably tick up just a bit, but I don't think it'll be much more than fourteen point five, but from fifteen to seventeen, it increased to fourteen point two, and it, it went up from thirteen point four, and that was due to the expenditures we had for the animal shelter and for the paying down debt. So that's why the increase has been there. But that's what we vow to keep on hand. A lot of times, localities will keep at least two months of expenditures on hand, for us, that would be about twelve million dollars, so fourteen is a good healthy amount to keep on hand.
And that is, just so, because we ran into this before, we got into a little budget hot water, this is an internal policy, a county policy, not a state policy.
Correct.
The state doesn't have a policy on this, so to each locality, they sit their own policy.
And so this is how our fund balance, the pre-audit fund balance, has looked from fourteen the last five years, so you can see it has come down. Seventeen and eighteen, I would consider that pretty much flat, since we were only looking at about a three hundred thousand dollar drop, so we're hoping that it's only going to tick up from here, especially next year, once we get our landfill fund established and those monies flowing in. The green line represents our financial management policy requirement of how much money we have to keep on hand, so you can see that kind, that gap is getting closer, but we still have about fourteen million dollars before we get to that point. So our revenue projections, we projected revenue at sixty-two point three, now that was with our old figures, our old tax rate, and so our actual general fund revenues totaled thirty, sixty-five point nine million, right just shy of sixty-six million dollars, and you have to remember that I adjusted those figures for that school carryover, so I'm not counting that in my revenue, I'm not counting that as, as a projected revenue either, because it's not real revenue. Under our expense projections, I've done the very same thing, I've adjusted those figures for our amount that we paid back to the schools of that seventeen carryover, which was two point six million dollars, so we projected general fund expense of sixty-eight point two, and we spent sixty-six point three roughly. And I have included a slide, and I know no one can read this at all, so you have a big slide at the very end that I blew up. Mr. Shorter's here, this is our delinquent collection, and I, I just have that in for informational purposes, and if you have any questions about delinquents, you can certainly ask Mr. Shorter, but one thing I will note, this was run on July the fifth, so it's only five days into July, which is what is few in July, it looks like, we didn't do anything in July much, but it was because this report was actually run July the fifth, so it's only got five days off the date from there. So with that, I will entertain any questions, and as I said, you know, previously, our auditors will come in, they do final two works the first week of October, they'll be here for a week, and we have to have our report to the state by the end of November, so that's when we will have more concrete figures for you all. And of course, our audit is on a, and a pool basis, and what I've given you tonight is on a cash basis.
Any questions, Ms. Vanderhaid? Sure. Thanks for being here, Mr. Short. Are there any other reports, Mr. Snodgrass?
No, sir, none of them are there.
We have any discussion items for the fifth meeting, if you're aware.
Unless there's anything to build that I discussed prior.
Anybody? Yeah. Starting September eighth, our landfill will be open on Saturdays, on eighth until then. Eight until then, you got that on the website? Yeah, we're working on getting everything out to the public. Any questions about that?
Yeah, if you guys found anything about the way they're dumping out there.
Yeah, I think it's getting better. I miss the plan.
I don't think it'll be better. Contract, contractor input on the blue some tires and.
Yeah, we've lost our own, we've lost some hoses. It's part of a long-term movement to consolidate the working face to a smaller area and closer to the firm, the life would better work at the end of the land bill. By moving our working face that direction, we're going to cut down, trash talk articles about this, we're going to cut down on the amount of leaching that we're collecting and treating, that's a very expensive process that costs.
How much?
Eighty thousand dollars a year, so it's a tremendous expense, but it's not only going to cut down on that cost, it's going to allow for better compaction, but it's also, we're going to build a, basically a road that will move, and that road will allow a greater turning radius, and a lot quicker in and out for the folks that have concerns right now, but we've got to go through this growing pain, which will take, what did you say, sixty, sixty days? To move that road back to the new working area, so it's going to take time, we know it's a pain, but there's a better outlook.
And that first week, we had about forty to rain, and it just.
Yeah, that didn't help.
It's gotten a lot better. Talking about trash, just so, there's been a lot of, I've received several calls the last two days of that dumpster, and obviously the new contractor doesn't get out of the truck to clean the sites up.
Correct.
And we've got some sites that are in terrible shape, and the communities are complaining. One of them is right off of Twenty-Nine, you'll have to brush it, another one's down on Moon's Road, later they owned that site that you rented, that allows us to utilize it, was really upset, and I went and took a look at it, it was terrible. A lot of it is just citizens that are abusing the site.
Yeah.
But that doesn't please the people that live around the sites. I know Mrs. Mumford said she had lived by that site for forty-five years, and she had never seen it as bad as it was this morning.
I went up to, I went on six twenty-two, and I couldn't even, I had to take back, and it was completely full, on the ground, and there was a guy backed up there from North Carolina with a truck, I don't know who it was, a chick at camera. I mean, it was, it was completely.
What time did that happen?
It was in the afternoon.
Check.
Yeah, it was North Carolina tags, that's all, I was wanting to get a camera on, but it was so full, I couldn't dump trash, I'd have to take back next day.
I'm relying on your citation portion in your, you know, not in the ordinance, that the judge is, so that'll help us.
And you saw in our Friday communication, hopefully you clicked on the link and saw the gentleman at your site actually dumping about fifteen tires into our container, and we're looking with the Commonwealth attorney, the sheriff's site, a criminal citation for that, we had another one yesterday, we called on camera. Our biggest hurdle to overcome right now is staffing. We don't have enough people to get out to the least of the sites today, it's going to be a long, slow slog to get there. Of course, we're concentrating on the five pilot sites, but we're also going to, we talked this morning about piloting two green box areas for enhanced enforcement activities, one on would-be Blair's construction site, and I saw it myself this morning, it was absolutely disgusting, what people left behind. It is a frustration every Monday morning, our route foreman, Mike Waller, goes out at three, four in the morning, every Monday morning, and tries to clean up those sites before first people gets there, and they're not the green box sites, and you know, he's just chasing a tail he'll never catch by himself, so. Some of the things we're thinking about are hiring two dedicated site enforcement officers that would roam the county, because fixing five plus two green boxes leaves us twenty-eight more, I mean, it's an enormous, we have thirty-four, thirty-five garbage collection sites, and our ability to get humans out there to police and manage those is just severely restricted. We're trying very hard to staff up, we have, I think we have enough to get two of the pilot sites staffed within the next few weeks.
It wasn't very first.
Six twenty-two's first, as well as one other one down in that area.
Perry Hill.
So we're just going to slowly ramp that up.
If we get the signage.
Sinage is.
Is ordered, and we've got to figure out this kind of, we'll get bids on that for ourselves.
In design, so we have to get a fence builder right now, the contractor, it's signed maker under contract, we've got another camera installed as of just the other day, we've got five more planned to install.
And Blair's will have one at that.
Yeah, Blair's green box site will be.
I don't have his camera.
So it is, we're learning so much, Richard's taking a crew next, tomorrow.
Yeah.
To bed, to learn some of their, what they've learned over the last twenty years, but the number one thing is staffing, staff, 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 we've got to get human management of these sites, whether it's dedicated to that site or roaming, or still we've got to have a better human presence to get this under control. But we're going to be sending out our first citations within the next few days, so hopefully the word will start getting out quickly that the county's serious about fixing this problem.
We're hearing people on Facebook say they got cameras out there now, so the word is getting out. Any other questions? We're going to motion we begin a closed session.
Chairman, I think we motion we begin a closed session to discuss the items listed in that board package to include the.
Does everyone certify the best of their knowledge, and we only went to close session for items that were legally exempted on the Virginia Code? If you believe we have deviated from the Virginia Code, please so state that we record the minutes of the meeting.
the minutes of the meeting. But can we leave it open and continue it over there?
You could, but you want to just adjourn that?
Leave it open, certify over there?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we should make an announcement to the board.
Okay, we'll certify.
All right, Mr. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Yes, scarce, Mr. Warren, Mr. Barber, Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Davis, Mr. Farmer.